Yeah, we said it could be our regulator, but it's not having a problem and just your stove is.
All right, it's now seven oh three, and we're gonna go ahead and get started. Order my council to please use your mics. I'm gonna go ahead and call it to order, and it is February twenty second, twenty twenty four. And Debbie, could you please call room?
Hi, Hester.
Here.
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 All right, then free link, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to approving tonight's agenda. Council, I do wanna recognize that we have been asked to remove item eight C. So our attorney has time to review. Any other trouble or additions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to refer.
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second. There's a motion by, oh. Oh.
Oh, removing eight C.
And do we have an executive session?
No executive session.
So no executive session as well, so removing eight C and eleven.
Make a motion to approve the agenda of removing eight C and removing the executive session.
Karen, did you want a second? Second. I'm trying to pressure you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's four O. We'll move on to approving tonight's consent agenda. Any questions, council? Any changes, Matt?
No, I would just like to say on item C, I would like to talk about that a little bit in my report at the end of the meeting.
Sounds great. All right, council, any further discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Todd, second by Kendra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's four O. We'll move on to communications. Kichai civic groups and committees, and I know that Betty is here to talk.
Where do I stand?
Up here.
Unless you wanna stand way back there.
I'm not used to this.
Good evening, mayor, council members, city administrator, people in the audience. My name is Betty Washington. I'm the president of the Kichai Arts Council. And our vice president is Von Rhodes, our secretary Janet Bradbury, and the treasurer Cindy Wills. Our mission statement is the Kichai Arts Council is to enhance and promote the arts in Kichai. And what I would like to do this evening is just tell you about some of the activities that the Arts Council will be doing in twenty twenty four. Our first activity, we took a field trip to Grover Labs, and this is a place, it's a place to rent office space, and a place is called a maker's lab where you can go and create. And also they have event space. Our next thing is that we've been working on for years, hopefully twenty twenty four will be the end of it and people can start visiting. The Kichai Coast Office Museum Workdays. And we just plan those every time and when people can help. Our third activity will be the barn quilt painting workshop, and that will be sometime in the spring. And then number four will be the Kichai Playhouse Dress Recursor around September. And the Rusty Act Raffle Tickets, we ask for a ten dollar donation, and that usually starts up beginning now and going until November. Okay, we also helped the Kichai Fair. We have a decorating booth for pumpkins. The fair buys the pumpkins and we buy the decorations, and people can come and get them a pretty pumpkin and decorate it too. Our next thing is called Chalk It Up. We used to do this in the Kichai Chamber, but we gave it to us, the Arts Council, so we're happy to do it. And what this is, we go decorate sidewalks, driveways, the parking lots, and we're gonna try to do this with some kind of activity with the fair. And our next thing is the Christmas swag workshop, and this is such a fun activity. We've been doing this for years. And we have our Kichai Chamber and our Kichai Arts Council. We have a Christmas party. Last year, this past year, we had it at Cindy and Richard Wills' house. And our last one, refresh fire hydrants, they need some refreshing. And so I talked with John Spears, and he will help us do that. So this is just to give you some of the activities that the Kichai Arts Council will be doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Betty. Council, any questions for Betty before she completely runs off?
Just sit awhile.
That's fine. Well, I see no questions, thank you. I know we did have a Kichai Fair meeting on the twenty...
No, nineteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Yeah, you can down.
On the fifteenth, and we had no new members. Membership is declining, and it is getting harder and harder to recruit. So again, we're gonna send out a plea. We meet on the third Thursday every month at seven P M. here at City Hall. If you can't make it to the meeting, please reach out to one of us. Jared's on Facebook asking for members. Teresa's here at City Hall. I can be reached in many, many places, Kendra as well. Find one of us, we will get you connected, we will figure out how to make this work. But the fair cannot happen without more members and more people coming and helping. There's seven of us, and running an entire fair for the amount of time that we really feel the community deserves is really hard. So I'm asking that we get a couple more volunteers, so thanks. We'll move on to Kichai good news. Teresa, I know you said you had something.
Well, I don't know if it's good news, but it's important news that we sent out our utility bills, and this is our annual gas safety campaign. So we sent out the brochures that remind people how to recognize the importance of recognizing gas. Our little scratch and sniffs are in there this year. There is for returning the survey, and this is required by K C C., our public campaign. And we do ask for the postcards to be returned for a drawing that will be held at the council, the first council meeting in March. For two winners will win a hundred dollars off of their utility bills just for returning the brochure or the postcard. So that's our, like I said, our annual campaign. The other thing, and I'm putting it here because it's under communications, it's not really good news, but I do wanna recognize. So we've had a few deaths in the community recently. Ethra Nefranovich, she lives in the, lived in the two-story white house across the street. She's lived here for fifty years. She recently passed away. Danny Smith, he was not a Kichai resident, but he was one of the founding members of the Fifty Five and Over Club. And he passed away earlier last week. His funeral will be this coming Saturday. And then Will Glenn, he and his wife Nancy live on Oliver. He's been a member of the community for nearly fifty years. Nancy was one of the original fair committee members. She was a clown at many, many of our events for Halloween and things. They have, they both devoted time to the community, so I just wanted to recognize those. Will's funeral will be this coming Saturday as well at the Methodist Church. So just the, like I said, to recognize the contributions they made to our community, to make our community better. Like I said, I know it's not good news, but I do wanna recognize them.
Celebrating them is good news.
Yes, celebrating what they have accomplished, yes. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I wanna give a shout out to the Kichai Police Department for their first community policing campaign. They are asking for donations for the Humane Society. Looks like you guys are specifically targeting soft dog treats and large rubber toys, but anything would help. And you guys are taking money donation, correct? I think that was clarified.
Yes, that is correct. We're taking monetary donations through the city, and in the city, we'll cut the checks to Humane Society at that time.
Perfect, well, thank you very much for Officer Watson's dedication to that and yours for helping start that. We really appreciate it. Any other Kichai good news? Seeing none, all right, we'll shut Kichai good news and move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to item seven, old business, water tower lighting.
Thank you, mayor and council. Thomas, do you wanna speak on this one, or do you want me to handle it?
It's up to you.
Totally up to you, so I'll let you.
I know you changed your summary a little bit, so. Mayor, council, so before you, a little summary, water tower lighting. So we have the water tower painted now. There was three hundred thousand dollars allocated to painting and lighting. When we first started getting the budget, when we first started getting bids for the water tower painting, we didn't think we were gonna be able to get the lighting with the cost. Fortunately for us, with Viking knocking that cost down to, you know, two hundred twenty seven thousand five hundred, it allowed us some, some leeway there for some lighting to be put up there. I reached out to about thirteen different electric companies. Most of them told me that they didn't do that type of work, that they'd rather stay on the ground. So I did, I ended up getting three bids. One from Southwestern Electrical, one from Electric Craft, and one from Atlas. Two of the bids are quite high. From what I understand is they're unionized, anything above so many feet is double time. So I'm pretty sure that's the reason why there's such a variance there in the bids. What I'm asking for is that we approve Atlas Electric to put the new lighting up on the water tower. I know many of you have drove through here, and there's maybe one light flickering at night. So I think it'd be nice to let people see our tower lit up at night. The company will actually come out and install there the same lights that Electric Craft was gonna put up, the exact same. They will install D M X controller in my office. It's the closest office. What it will do is there's patterns. You can change the lighting on the water tower. So, you know, sometimes they wanna make it green, sometimes they wanna make it pink. With the, with our previous lighting, we couldn't do that. So they'll actually run that in, and then what they're offering is four hours of training for employees, whichever employee that Matt or Matt employees that Matt deems to do that. I personally don't wanna be able to change the lighting, so don't call me when it's pink or red or whatever it may be. Or, you know, but red, white, and blue for any day. So, I mean, it's kinda up to, I know lots of other cities have started doing this to where they change it. So, but that's what's in front of you now with the two, the two twenty seven five and then the forty six five rings a total of two hundred seventy four thousand, which still puts us under twenty six, twenty six thousand, under three hundred thousand that was allocated to it years ago, so. That is what is before you guys tonight.
Council, any questions?
No, I just have a comment.
Oh, no.
Is it a comment for me or you guys sit down?
No, as a grandfather, just a little fun in our meeting, my grandkids, when they're on two fifty four, they get excited that they're almost to grandma or grandpa's house when they see the tablet. So if they could see it at night, that would be a good thing.
Yeah, so we're actually adding extra lights too, so there's gonna be lights that light up the under valley too. That way we can see all the colors and not just up top, so.
That was fun, wasn't it? You enjoyed it?
It was. Thank you. I think we need to put the horse back on top. Cause that's, that was my, my parents, whenever we were going to Lawrence, that was when I got to start the movie in the car, to be able to get up to Lawrence and keep quiet for the rest of the ride. So I think maybe we should just put the horse on top and call it good. Okay, well, I would entertain a motion from council on this.
I move that we, I move that we approve the Public Works Director to purchase new lighting and equipment for installations by Atlas for the amount not to exceed forty six thousand five hundred.
Well, second.
Motion by Karen, second by Matt. All in favor, say aye.
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 Carrie's four O. Move on to City Hall operating hours, and this is discussion only.
Oh, yeah, please skip eight.
I'm sorry, I skin Thomas always.
I'll have Thomas come back up here with me.
He doesn't want.
Mayor and council, I'd like to recognize Thomas this evening. He does a lot for the city. He's been with the city for fourteen years and currently has served as Public Works Director for the last three years. Thomas brings a deep understanding of all functions of public works as what, and is well versed in the regulatory, legal, and best practices throughout his department. Thomas also has a vast historical perspective that enriches our understanding of past projects and helps with strategic planning for the city's future. Thomas's dedication is evident not only in his hard work, but also in the caliber of individuals he assembles and hires for his department. Since being appointed Public Works Director, Thomas has a steadfast, has been steadfast in his pursuit of cost-saving initiatives for the city. In September last year, as part of the Kichai and Oliver project, Thomas presented estimates for the gas line portion of the project that exceeded one million dollars. Having the estimated one million dollars in project costs, Thomas demonstrated exceptional resourcefulness by utilizing his team, his existing equipment for the gas line relocation, resulting in the savings of over five hundred thousand dollars for the city. The cost reduction is, it directly benefits the citizens of Kichai. Furthermore, Thomas, in cooperation with P E C., developed a gas line relocation plan for three downtown area, for the downtown area, resulting in significant savings during the redesign process. This cost is above and beyond that five hundred thousand dollars. So essentially what Thomas did was design the relocation for the downtown gas lines, gave it to P E C., and they charged just to put it in official form. Yeah, so, but it was a significant cost savings. Thomas is always looking for ways to operate efficiently and save money to protect city resources and give back to the citizens. One more example of this was the city's transition to using a brine mix on our roadways during snow and ice events. The process not only saves money, time, and eliminates the bulk storage of the sand and salt, but it also increases compliance with K D H E. stormwater regulations and reduces the need for street sweeping and removing that salt and sand. And that is a significant cost savings as well, so. Thomas exemplifies the principles of servant leadership. His unwavering dedication to our city and its residents is evident through his consistent and selfless service. Thomas, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Well, I would just like to say it's not, it's not all me. Like I have, I have a great group of guys out there. I mean, most of them stay after hours with me, go work as long as I work. Developing the plan, you know, Earl and Larry actually was a part of that too, so it's not just all me. I'm sure after we get done with this gas project, all of them will all take dinners at least. It's not all me. I gotta, I gotta hand to those guys that are out there bussing their reins and they tell us it's a hard line, so.
Well, tell them thank you on our behalf.
Absolutely. Thank you, Matt.
And if you notice, servant leadership, he doesn't take any of the credit. So he always gives back to his people. Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you. Yay, Thomas. Okay, now City Hall operating hours.
Yes.
So over the last several years, we have heard from time to time residents and those other businesses that we deal with about being able to come in before they go to work, after they go to work. So one of the things that we are wanting to implement starting the first, first week of March is changing our operating hours so that City Hall will be open from seven thirty A M. to five thirty P M. on Monday through Thursday, and then one, seven thirty to one thirty on Fridays. This actually increases the customer connection time by one hour, cause right now we are basically open for forty five hours a week. That would be forty six hours. Our staff has indicated that they would like to reduce their lunch hours from one hour to a half an hour. So that kind of helps alleviate some of that, where we would be coming in, two people, well, one person would be coming in at seven thirty on Mondays and Tuesdays, the other person seven thirty on Wednesdays and Thursdays, everybody seven thirty on Fridays. We would have one person who's still coming in at eight A M. so that there would be that shift. So there would be time in the morning and in the evening where they aren't alone for half an hour. But we felt like that would be a reasonable amount of time. And then like I said, everybody, and then whoever come, then the other person would come in late those two days. And that way not if, nobody has to be the one always going, being here late, nobody has to be the one always being here early. That would also accommodate a little bit more when, you know, we have council meetings, so Debbie knows she's gonna stay late, or there's a planning commission meeting or a court, and the other ones are gonna have to stay late. So it makes it where their day's not quite as long that way as well. So technically don't need your permission, so that's why it's discussion only. But we did wanna give you, like I said, heads up that that's what we're going to do as an effort for better customer service and better staff service so that they can, cause quite honestly, people want off on Fridays early. And a lot of times we have to accommodate because of the different evening meetings, so that'll make bad news as well.
Any questions?
Is there any concern about safety with just one person here?
There has been, and that's where I come in, because I am not one of the three people that normally staffs the office. So that would be my responsibility. And it doesn't matter whether I work forty hours or forty five, so.
And nearly all the time we have somebody here? Yeah.
We normally, our goal has been to have two people on staff at all times.
Right.
Covering lunches and things. Having a half an hour lunch kinda makes up for some of that as well, but yeah, so that we'll be able to accommodate that.
So would there ever be a time that somebody be here just by themselves?
The intention is no.
Okay.
Is there? Yes.
Yeah.
Just like there is now, cause if somebody is sick or, or you have the case where one person's already out for class or vacation, and then you have something else, that yes, that does happen, and it might, and sometimes it's.
It can happen in any business, with programs, organizations.
And there's usually other people, even if it isn't the front office staff, I mean, you have people in back, so. But that is, the intention is not to have anybody here by themselves.
It's my understanding that Friday closing early is not a burden for the city or for, for the public because there's not a lot of activity on Friday anyway.
About the only time that that could be a burden would be if the tenth of the month is a Friday.
Oh, yeah, for.
Because that's the new date.
Yeah.
And as we currently operate with that anyway, any payments put in the drop box over the weekend are not considered late because of, you know, like I said, we have to, we have to stop processing payments at some point during the day anyway. So not all payments that are in on Fridays are gonna be processed that same day anyway. So we've always extended the courtesy of those throughout the weekend, so that would not change. And so because of that, I don't feel like that would be good, okay. And I will say that normally, we have one resident who comes in consistently at four fifty five on Friday before he would go. I will make sure he knows. And the other people that tend to come in very late on Fridays are contractors that have a one-hour question. So, so yes, they would, they would be, they would be inconvenienced, but at, no. And at that point in time, the normally, Thomas is by that time, usually already put in like fifty hours that week, so he's gone at that time. Dustin is usually gone at that time, so the two people that can handle their one-hour question are already gone, so they're kind of on their own. They have to wait till Monday anyway. And then they can come in at seven thirty on Monday and just, you know, right there.
Great, all right. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Let me answer my questions. Anybody else? All right, well, we'll move on to council reports. Council, do you have any reports? If not, I will talk about my couple meetings.
The only thing I have is a big thank you for Teresa and Matt for spending time with me this week on, you know, explaining some of the budget to me and how that works. I really, really appreciate your time and effort and your vast knowledge, so it was, it was well received. Thank you.
Awesome. Any other possible questions?
And so I attended a, I've got a couple meetings in my brain, and I'm trying to remember if it's D C F. or this job. I attended the K two fifty four strategic planning with Matt. I can't remember what day it was, but we started talking about what the mission should be or could be moving forward for the K two fifty four corridor, making sure that we're still aligned with what the original mission was and how we wanna move forward in the years to come. So we started that conversation, and then we had a brief meeting today, and that was in Benton. And that was a meeting where Circle presented about a pilot project that they had started a few years ago with Workforce Alliance about internships with their school district to bring high school kids into local businesses to intern over the summer or during the school year and how they've been managing that. I'm trying to think if there's any other meetings. I hope not, cause if not, it wasn't intended. I didn't attend, so that's all the meetings I have. Any questions?
Well, we'll close council reports and move on to staff reports. It looks like Public Works is first.
Thomas, you're getting tired running back and forth.
Yeah.
I was waiting for the agenda, but I actually had to send out a summary too, so. So I'm sure they're ready, you guys. Obviously, I didn't have mine. As we always do for some bunkery, gas and water meters. They're starting to become a handful just because our water meters are so old. The newer even software is kinda going hay water, so we're starting to fall off a little bit there, so it's starting to take us a little longer to get those done. Continue relocating gas with downtown project. Today, we actually completed, well, actually last night, because we ended up with a problem which kept us all here till seven o'clock. Found a well that hadn't been capped with the gas line over it, so that was fun. But we have finished and completed the southeast corridor. The main and all the yard lines are ran. All the old lines are vacated. We still have to go back and do some yard work and some cleanup and, but that section of town is done. So next week, you will probably see us on the north side behind Valley Floral, starting to relocate that line. Marked and flagged over twenty plus locates, with it being nice right now, we actually just received like fifteen today. Plus some are cable drops and such, so things are trying to ramp up. We graded all the dirt roads, I said in Kichai, so the sunny del area. Matt, it's the, with the kind of two different places, what's funny about that is we have asphalt roads, they have dirt roads. So with the winter, the way it was, it was kinda like a permafrost line about eighteen inches, caused a lot of heating, a lot of potholes. So we've actually had Reyes Trucking bring in about a hundred tons of rock so far. They're currently hauling in about five hundred more tons of road gravel to put on top of it. They had a few roads that were pretty bad. So we've started on those. We actually pulled out five hundred tons of that rock out between ninety-third and a hundred and first on Hillside and placed that down. So about another thousand to haul out there. We hauled out about another seventy tons out to Mill Stream. Trash trucks are probably the worst enemies for dirt roads. That, they pull all the way over to the softest part of the dirt road, which is close to the ditch. Fixed a couple of water leaks. I'd like to thank Matt for that. No, I'm just kidding. We did have a couple water leaks that popped up, it took a little bit to fix, one of them on barrier, it's currently fixed, which helps solve another problem, cause we pulled a copper line out of, out of the ground, so it's now poly. That's kinda been the last month for us.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt.
Next, we have the police department.
Very nice, I'm happy.
Got it on his phone.
Yeah, thanks. Take all of you. Uh, thanks for having me, Chris. Just kinda briefly go over a few things. The, again, the community outreach with the Humane Society, we're doing the bed drives, so as you guys are aware of that. Drop-off location here as well as jump start. So that's off to a decent start at this point. We'll kick that back over to, uh, to the Humane Society when that's ready. Spring and summer, again, full of community events. We've got a lot of stuff on our agenda. So the park will be active. You'll see us down there a lot. Trying to get together our cops and bobbers, fishing deal as well where we can reach out. A lot of times we cooperate with Bel Air Police Department on that. Use their ponds or ours, or maybe do a two, two thing. State Wildlife and Parks comes in, brings in fishing poles and gets your kids out here. So really great event for that, good connection with the community there. Coming up here pretty quick, we're gonna have a county attorney's office and host some training here. We're gonna be in partnership with Bentley Police Department on that. And what it is, is the county attorney's office getting with the smaller agencies. So we understand how their affidavit process works, their charging appointments and all those things. Sedgwick County is just a completely different animal when it comes to law enforcement than any of our surrounding jurisdictions. It is, it's its own thing. It's no way I can explain it without boring you to death on terms and, and different stuff. But anyway, they're gonna come in, they're gonna show us what they, what they need to expect. So our felony cases will be more streamlined going up and be taken care of that way. Talking on different crimes and stuff, as we're coming into springtime, we're gonna see an uptick. Where we're seeing DUIs start to rise on us, several of those coming to court this time. So casino, you know, all of our being, uh, with on being, neither Hillside to some degree, being the back roads, so to speak, between the locations. We're, we're just gonna have to handle that as it, as it comes, but. Let's see. Taser ten training, we have that coming up. So new technology we're putting on the streets with our officers. It's a new technology that Taser Axon came out with, we invested. It's a new Taser. This one is actually ran off of, again, more technical stuff. It doesn't necessarily run a hundred percent off a battery. This runs off of a primer which launches the darts. It allows the weapon system to carry ten darts versus the typical two that we had before. One of the things we run into, one of the problems we're running into with that is if you go less legal, which is what this item is. You pull out and fire, your hands are busy. If you miss, you still have a weapon in your hand that is now no good. You can shop with it still, so if you discard it, the suspect can still grab it. It's, it's just a really tense situation at that point trying to transition between weapon systems. What this allows us is ten, ten opportunities. So, you know, clothing, different instructions or things like that. We've got, we've got more, more options, more, more time to fire and get that connection with electronics to block somebody up and, and put them down. How it works is just nerve muscular disruption. If you guys have ever had a real bad cramp in Bill tonight, it's the same thing with this system. It's a bad cramp that goes through your whole body. You can't move. You can think about how painful it is for five seconds while you're laying on the ground and putting handcuffs. But there's no fight. It's done. So that's why we invest in this technology, because it absolutely keeps officers safe, keeps the suspects safe, the community safe. This one makes an audible sound when we charge it up, which is typically what we're looking for is just compliance as soon as we draw it. As soon as the system is drawn or body cameras link to it. Body cameras are already automatically turned on and anybody in a thirty-foot circuit of us, their cameras are turned on. As well as any Axon dash cameras also come on. So there's no more, you know, oh, I gotta hit my button and then, you know, let's just go straight to it. So I'll demonstrate what it sounds like when it's, uh, when it activates, so you guys can hear the new technology. Again, this one's brand new, so. So that gets, that gets your attention. I mean, that's, and the idea behind that is, you know, the Star Trek and the electronics and Star Wars and all that. I mean, everybody recognizes that as a, as a charging sound and something's coming, so. The cool part about the technology is it comes with a training package, which allows us to use hook and loop darts and a life suit. So we can actually roll into life scenarios, fire training darts at the target. And really have a full-blown scenario where before, you know, it was somebody had to volunteer to take the ride. That's no fun, so. Anyway, great technology. We're putting it to be on the streets this week. We had a training this week, so. So, Matt, any questions?
I just wanna say thank you, cause I can tell your presence in the city is making a difference.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Even though there will always be speeders, I feel like the things that, I don't know if anybody else has noticed, but people are observing the law. Or I didn't feel like that was the case at one point in time.
Yeah, and again, that, that comes back to our, our troops, our guys on the ground. You know, a lot of times I'm tired for the administrative stuff and, and we just, it just finally got through our entire policy manual. From front to back with Lexapro and that is a, that's a whole lot of eye bleeding, reading for you. It's rough, but we made some revisions there when we needed to and those are the ones holding down, holding down the turf for me. Last week and this week, I'm working nights and trying to get out with the guys more nighttime and taking care of the administrative stuff at, at home, you know, throughout the day. When I came with phone calls and stuff, it was down low at night, but it's been good, it's been good.
It's making a difference.
Can I add something?
Yes, ma'am.
You're also doing first aid training next month with Sedgwick County.
Yes, so Sedgwick County's coming in, putting on first aid training for us. We have a lot of training.
They're busy.
But yes, they, they're coming in to do a first aid and we're both met up to see the staff as well. That's something that, you know, that happens like that when you need unfortunate line of work, it's a perfect system thing for us. So staying fresh on that's very important.
Does that include CPR?
It is CPR, first aid and AED. Thank you for my question.
You're welcome.
Highly encourage that even for residents to get certified. I'm a trainer as well for first aid CPR and AED. And it is really a lifesaver. You never know when you're gonna come up to a situation, you never think you're gonna come up to a situation and then it happens. And just having some of that first aid training to recognize signs and symptoms of problems, even your coworkers, is amazing, so thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
All right, planning a zoning, is that?
Hello. Zoning, we've had our first case of the year. It's gonna be presented to plan and commission next month. And then hopefully at the end of the month, it'll be, come to you guys. Stormwater, they're working on the MS four permit, getting that turned in. Should be turned in either tomorrow or early next week. And nothing with code enforcement so far. Knock on wood. I have been working with several staff members, Chris, Casey and Debbie. Looking at a new phone system. Ours is very antiquated and old. It's gone out several times over the past couple of weeks, maybe a month. And we're looking at a new system that allows us to call in between offices. So we don't have to get up and walk all the way down the hallway and say, hey, you have a phone call on line two. Only to find out that that person is not in the building. We will also have voicemail and hopefully some other features. So look forward to that coming out soon-ish. Anybody have any questions for us?
Chief, what has been that problem when they've gone out? Do you, do we know or? You, you said antiquated system, but I didn't know if there was.
It is no longer supported by the company who installed it.
Okay.
And that company is out of business.
Okay.
So.
We have another company that will come out and make calls or, you know, has addressed it. But at the same time, it's not their main focus.
Right.
The incidents we've had, one day the phones were out.
Yeah, totally.
Other times, we'll make an outgoing call. They can, we can hear them, but they can't hear us. Static issues on the line. Like Dustin said, it's just an old system. And our goal is to make sure we always have phones, so.
We think they're important.
Is, is that impacting the police department as well or just this?
Well, no, please, please, please change the phones, because what happens is it goes to the answering service and they call me. Or whoever's on call. And I don't know how to take anybody's bill or my cellphone and why I'm digging it out of hole. So I get those calls.
You get them?
Or whoever's on call that day, yeah, so.
We have tried to, uh, straightening that on this last one, where it actually went to one of our cellphones. But, so, cause we know that they didn't like that.
Yeah, it will, it will just upgrade the whole system and take care of a lot of those old phone issues that we have, yeah.
But if they called a police, we could just say, hold. And, and send them to police instead of, say, please call this number if they need cases or something.
The police department.
I just didn't know if it was impacting you as well.
Yes, yeah, our phone, our phone lines were down as well.
Oh, were they? Okay, cause they're on a separate.
Yeah, we're, I was having the same issue that Matt was having where when we would, I remember it was you or somebody was on the phone with I. I could hear you, but you often couldn't hear me.
Yeah, but we thought that was our phones and not yours. Have you been having that problem independently of us? Okay, so I thought it was just our phones. Cause we were talking to you.
Probably should clarify, nine-one-one is not handled by the city phones.
Correct.
Oh. Yeah.
I, I wanna make that very clear, that that is not going through our phone system, so there is not a backup.
Correct.
That is not an issue. I don't want people concerned about that, so that might clarify.
Dustin and our staff has put a lot of work into that and came up with some good recommendations. And I'll pass that information on with the councils as we get a little closer. And last thing, if I heard Thomas correctly earlier, it sounds like I'm gonna learn how to turn lights on and off.
Thank you. All right, administration.
That's the part that says duties to be assigned.
Yeah.
Mayor and Councilor, my report, I will just, I won't go through the whole thing, but just highlight a couple of things. A lot of stuff is redundant and has already been covered. One thing I wanna touch on is Thomas mentioned that a lot of the dirt roads incur a lot of damage during the winters. They call it the winter storm, the extreme cold we had. Sedgwick County is trying to get a emergency disaster declaration on that. And reached out to any cities who had incurred expenses. We submitted about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenses so far to get those roads back in shape. So our hope is the money that we're putting into those, we will get it back as soon as this whole process goes through. But we're pretty confident that will. This week, I met with a landscape architect over at the park to address some of the concerns that we've had for the terrorist area there. A lot of the problem with those rocks becoming loose, like he explained, is over the years. Excuse me, water seeps down behind those rocks, freezes, expands and starts heating all that stuff out and that's what has happened. No fault of anybody who installed it, it's just what happens over time when those walls are built that way. So a lot of new technologies that go into building those retaining walls that I wasn't aware of. But he is giving us some different renderings and ideas of things we may do to that area to, number one, increase the safety. And number two, make it a little more attractive and more part of the park over there, so. We'll update you as, as we get those. Next week, on the twenty-seventh, which is Tuesday at two PM. I'm meeting with Sedgwick County representatives from Sedgwick County. I think we had discussed this before. I've made council aware of it. Sedgwick County is wanting us to annex certain parts of roadways, kinda being that piecemeal quilt system of, of Kechai that we have, especially to the north. What they're proposing makes sense, however, it's gonna have an impact on the city as far as our budget. So I would like, I talked to Todd, I would like to have a council member maybe meet with me with Sedgwick County. So Todd, if you can't make it, we can designate somebody else. I believe the mayor's gonna be headed out of town at that point. I know Karen and Kendra, you probably haven't been involved in that a lot, because it's kinda stuff that's just, uh, came up recently. But I know Todd has some history on it, Matt, you have some history on it as well. No decisions are gonna be made, we're just going to talk with them about what they're proposing. We're not the only one. They're talking to Val Air, Park City, Valley Center. All the small communities that have annexed areas similar to we have, where we own half the roadway. Or, you know, our city limit starts here and then breaks off for a quarter mile and starts again. Those areas like that, that just makes sense that one jurisdiction would maintain it, but it is a, a conversation we need to have, so. If that works out for you, Todd, just let me know. If not, we'll get somebody else. I do wanna talk a little bit about the COLA or rate, the market rate adjustment that we had under the consent agenda. I think in short, we need to look at our compensation plan for the city. I think there's a better way that we could do it. It was, the city had hired a consulting group back in eighteen, nineteen to come in. They did a very comprehensive study, an overview of the, the salaries within the city, how they compare to other jurisdictions. It's done all the time. Derby just went through one, Handover's getting ready to go through one. But it's been, we're coming up on five years now. And one of the biggest issues that I see with the current system that we have in place is it's kind of a, let's wait and see where the numbers fall type of system, especially when it comes to cost of living. So I really think we need to look at something that's a little more predictable. When it comes to number one, merit increases, number two, cost of living increases. To allow us to budget better for those increases. Allow us to control those variables instead of waiting like we, we are now to see where the numbers fall. It would provide a little more stability for the employees. It would make it easier for us to budget. And looking at some of that. That pay, those pay ranges would help us control the level at which an employee first, or moves through those pay ranges. So we don't have people, just because we're getting a, a cost of living of three or five or seven percent that would move up several steps in that pay plan and may top out. So it allows us to manage that a little bit. But something I really wanna look at, I would like council's direction on that a little bit. Nothing you need to vote on, but just kinda the consensus that we need to move forward on that. And I will start that process of looking at the compensation and bring some recommendations to you in the next few months.
I know I've had multiple conversations with you about this, so I'm fully on board with that, but I don't have a vote technically.
Yeah, we don't.
And we're not voting on anything, but that's one of my recommendations, yes.
You can weigh in on this as well, cause it's, it's not a vote, it's just kinda a general consensus and moving forward.
And for me, the critical thing is working within our budgets. And so, you know, when we, we budget a certain amount and then the CPI comes up different, then that puts us in difficult situations. So we've gotta stay within the means of our budget. That's, that's one of my concerns, however we do that, whatever plan we come up with. We've, we've gotta work within our budget.
Yep, I would agree.
Could you be looking at other cities' compensation?
Yeah.
To kinda just a comparison and if so, what cities would those be?
Yeah, absolutely. I can't give you the, I just don't know yet what cities. But typically, we compare ourselves to other cities in the Wichita metro area. That's, that's where our people go, that's where our people come from. So when it comes to retention and recruiting, we wanna look at our neighbors to see where they are, because that's where they're gonna go. A lot of times, you know, cities will compare themselves to cities of comparable size. That is not always feasible, because the cost of living and the competition in a rural western town or a rural eastern town in Kansas, their demographics are far different than ours. So, you know, oftentimes they will have a lower rate of pay because they don't have anybody to compete with. When you're in Kechai, you can walk across the street and go to work for the city of Wichita. You can walk across the street and go to work for the city of Val Air, Park City, Valley Center. So those are the primary cities that we would focus on is the Wichita metro area. I know we like to consider ourselves a rural community. We are somewhat of a rural community in a metro area. Like, you know, a lot of our surrounding cities. So to answer your question, those, that's where we would look, is within this region, this metro region. So, yes.
And the other thing I'd add to that is, is, is we've had this conversation before in the past. Is as we do those comparisons, looking at total packages for people. I think that that's critical, that final number of benefits and compensation and hourly rate.
Yes.
One of the budget workshops that I'm involved in right now, that is what the, the crux of it, actually today's lesson we're doing. We're gonna continue that on next Tuesday. So that was one of the ones, and so looking at that was kinda very timely.
Yeah, nothing that can be done overnight, something that takes a lot of work, but it can be done, so, yeah. Yeah, nothing that can be done overnight, something that takes a lot of work, um but it can be done, so, yeah. And then the last thing I have, I just want to give you a handout here. Will you do I have room to squeeze through? Which is a estimated timeline for our budget process this year. So as you will see, kind of in May, well, let me back up a little bit. Staff continually looks and works with the budget uh throughout the year. Each month, we have a budget team meeting. We discuss budget topics, uh kind of some projections, roundtable things that are going on, uh making sure that our budget's in good shape and we're within our means on our budget. So we look at it all year long. Really, in May, we're gonna start drilling down and put it out to our staff, um needs that they will need for the coming year. Equipment, personnel, I like to call it their wish list. Um in a perfect world, I wish I could have this. Not always what we're gonna get, but uh we need to start talking about our needs uh for the future. So that's when we as staff will really start drilling down on the budget. In May, we will have a workshop at some point to kind of get direction from the council on your priorities for the twenty-five budget. And then in June, um is kind of when our budget season kicks off. It's when we get our numbers from the county, um on our, you know, what our our taxes uh come in at. And those are the numbers we can really start working off of. So after we get that first part of June, I think they're supposed to be released like the first of June, sometimes they come in that first week. Once we get those numbers, we will schedule budget workshops uh throughout the next month or so with the council, so we can get you all the information that we have, further discuss uh some of the goals and needs of the council and get direction from you on on where we should go. Again, in July, we'll have another workshop. Um July twentieth is the last day to notify the county of our intent to exceed our revenue neutral rate. Uh you dealt with that last year, so we will be discussing that. Um we will set our revenue neutral rate and set a public hearing sometime in July and then accept the budget and set it for a public hearing. In August, uh we will have a revenue neutral rate budget hearing and adopt the revenue neutral rate in the budget. In September, um is the state's deadline uh for the last day to hold tax rate um in budget hearings. We intend to have it done well before then in August. And October is kind of the drop dead date to get everything submitted to the county clerk, so um pushing some of this up a little bit. Trying to get things done by August will give us plenty of time to get the other stuff done and make sure that we have our budget submitted on time. So just kind of an estimated timeline. Things may change a little bit, but we will give you plenty of notice on when we need to have workshops, special meetings, uh anything like that. So if you have any questions, please give me a call or shoot me an email and I'll be happy to answer them, but I just wanted to get that to you. So uh you had it before we start working on that.
I know this is a draft, but the one twenty of those Saturdays, would it be the nineteenth, right? Or are they gonna take them on Saturdays?
Well, it could be, this is what we took off the league's night.
This was, well, this was, this was the league's estimated schedule.
Okay.
So it is not, it is not set, so it was the estimated.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure, because I was like, I don't think they do this on Saturdays.
No, they just said estimated dates, so, and I think that based on past, um what's it, just kind of a general guidelines and yes, whether they adjust for Mondays and Fridays and things.
I just wanted to clarify.
I guess I I should have done this under Kechai Good News, but um it was something that Matt said that triggered my thought process. Um when you guys were talking about the winter storm, um we all remember the winter storm twenty-one where gas prices shot through the roof. Um there was some of that with this one, however, um because back in September, October, we signed up through K M G A for a fixed price. Um our gas prices for January were up less than twenty-five, or about twenty-five to fifty cents um from where they were last month. So that fixed price gas um did help and I kind of like to think that some people actually helped pay attention to the conserving, but um that did keep our prices down, so that was it. We were able to, you know, keep that back, I guess, so.
That's awesome.
Yes.
Really, really great to hear.
And one last thing, um as it relates to budget, I had a meeting with the dean of the Hugo Wall School at Wichita State. Um and they are going to help us develop a financial plan for the city of Kechai, uh so we can look at kind of some of the historical, where we've been historically, um and we'll look at moving forward. Uh kind of a roadmap of where we are and where we need to go. So uh there's a lot of numbers we need to get together, a lot of information we need to discuss uh between he and I to get started on this. And uh we will probably, we're gonna talk more in March, um when he finishes up with the big project he has going with the county right now. Uh but I'm kind of, I'm very excited about that and I think it will really help our budget process and uh give us some vision on things we need to accomplish and how we get there in a financially responsible manner, so.
Just to piggyback off that, um if you watched the county commission staff meeting from two, I think it's two meetings ago, they, he was there and he discussed their budget and um what they did and his presentation was really, really, really good. So I would encourage anybody to go watch that and how they operate because it was really.
Incredible stuff that they're doing and uh this is something they've never done before for a city, so kind of excited to be, the things we discussed, uh they just have some really good ideas and I think it will be some good visioning for the city. Other than that, I don't have anything. Any questions uh from the council, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, council? Seeing none, all right. We don't have a workshop next time, correct?
No, ma'am.
And but I want to make sure before we adjourn, we have already had two council members say they are not able to attend the next meeting. We cannot hold if we don't have at least three of you. And we do have a special guest, our honorary mayor for a day at the next meeting, so we really need to have that meeting. If not, we need to make sure we push it off until she can be here, so.
As of right now, we have a quorum. Todd, you'll be gone, Karen, you'll be gone, but Kendra, Paul, Haseki will be here and Matt, you will be here.
Right?
Yes.
Yeah, as we know, things can change, um and we'll just kind of play it by you, but we plan to still have a meeting.
I just wanted to make sure and put it out there in case the councils think about ditching me that night. All right, well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Karen, second by Kendra, all on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Harry Sporo, will you adjourn? Thank you all.